This conference will now be recorded.
And call to order is the meeting of the Monmouth City Council of Tuesday, April 7th. Here in Volunteer Hall, myself, Janet Schennard, Chad Olson, and Zach, our recorder is here. And then Phyllis, would you like to do the roll call, please?
Counselor Bell?
If you're not speaking, you're... If you're not speaking, mute yourself, please.
Counselor Carey? Counselor Carey?
He's here and he's unmuted. I don't know why he's not speaking his name.
I'm getting no audio here for me. This is John.
Okay.
Counselor Lopez?
Counselor Lopez is here.
Counselor Sharmur?
Here.
Counselor Schinkel? Counselor Silvernagle?
I'm here.
Eric Coon?
Here. So again, if you're not speaking, if you can mute yourself, it looks like Suzanne. Right, so if you can mute yourself, we can mute everybody or nobody, so we're muting nobody. And if you can find your own mute button and mute yourself, that's helpful.
Can somebody tell me where that is on the iPhone? I found it last time. I don't see it this time.
All right.
You can't hear me?
We can hear you. Yeah, so...
Where is the mute button?
Somebody explained to Laurel how to mute her iPhone. I'm not familiar with that.
Laurel, if you bring up the screen that shows speaker, keypad, there's a mute button on there. Speaker and keypad. Okay, I've got the keypad up, but I don't see a speaker there. Oh yeah, there's all... I don't see a mute button there, though.
Look through the microphone icon. Click on the microphone icon.
What?
You should see a green microphone, or red microphone icon if you click on that. It will unmute you. Or mute you.
I don't... Okay, I'll just be quiet while you're talking.
Thank you. And Suzanne, it looks like you, your phone is also unmuted.
Yeah, so I sit on my phone. I don't know why it's coming up there. Um, looking for... I can mute that myself.
All right, we're going to mute you Suzanne until we... You can wave if you need to. All right, let's go. Let's try this thing. Um, so I will lead us in the flag salute, and then we will start our consent calendar. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So we start with the consent calendar this evening, which consists of the minutes of our council meeting of March. Those minutes were included in our packets, and unless there are any corrections or additions, I would move to approve the consent calendar.
I move to approve the...
Thank you, Darren. Thank you, Darren.
My second.
For the consent is approved, and Roxanne, your second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Sounds good. Any opposed? All right, thank you very much for that. For the mayor's report this evening, I think the... As everyone can imagine, I think we are all pretty busy with various activities and meetings. I just want to take this one opportunity to really not only thank our staff. Things have been rapidly changing, and then there's a lull for a couple of days, and people feel like maybe they have the new normal figured out, and then it upends again. And they've done a tremendous job of reacting to that, of thinking ahead as to where we need to go with things. And I am, I just, I think we're very fortunate to have people who are riding this wave and communicating with our community and working with citizens, the businesses, the chamber, and mostly our fellow partners to really try to get through this as best we can. Speaking of partners, I, as we drive through town, we all now see the "Stay Home, Save Lives" signs. That was a sort of a brainchild of the community group that's meeting, we're still meeting twice a week. That consists of Chad and myself representing the city of Monmouth, John McGardle and Tom Pesimer representing the city of Independence, Jennifer Kubica, the school superintendent is there, Rex Fuller, president of the university, and then Stengi, our chief of our fire department. And we are meeting twice weekly. That idea for the lawn signs kind of came out of that. Thank you, Counselor Bell, for her quick graphics. I knew I could kind of count on her. And everybody pitched in a little bit to pay for those. The fire department helped assemble them and get them out. And it's just a really good reminder. I've heard a lot of positive comments about those, so that's been really terrific. We have some other things in the works and really trying to remind people how seriously we take this, how seriously we all need to be about this. We do have a couple of confirmed cases in our community. So both the university and Dutch Brothers announced that they had a mutual student/employee who had tested positive. So while we don't get a lot of details from the Oregon Health Authority, we do know that Polk County does have several cases of COVID-19. And we have unfortunately had our first death in the county in the past week. But really, the reports that Chad and I get daily that are updates, not only from the Oregon Health Authority, but they have a wealth of information about the readiness of our state to deal with these issues, show that what we're doing is worth it. And we are grateful to people who are complying with this, who are understanding of this. It is extremely disruptive. It's been hard, and with this gorgeous weather, it's going to be a little harder. But I, this, we will, we will get through this if we can all work together. And I appreciate the work that we have done so far as being in the city of Monmouth and in our combined community. I'm very, very proud of the work everyone's doing, and thank you, everybody, for that. So reports of council representatives and boards and commissions, that one was a little thin, I think, this time. I don't think we've had a meeting, have we, Chad?
Yeah, correct. So what I did, given the fact that the nonessential meetings have been canceled, I just collapsed that all into one. And at least my thinking when I put it together was for each of the council members to take a moment to speak to a topic or an area that you're a liaison for. And if you, since you haven't been meeting with your respective boards or commissions, you may not have anything to report, but that's kind of the idea, is just to allow the council to speak on whatever topic you'd like.
Sounds great. I'm going to call you one by one. If you have something you'd like to mention, either about the work you know that's going on or observations you have, I would love to kind of hear. I'm not getting out as much as I'd like to at this time. So Darren, if I could start with you, if you have any words for us?
I do not this evening.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Carey, Counselor Carey, anything?
I have nothing.
All right. Counselor Sharmur?
Well, the senior advisory board, of course, has not been meeting, and the senior center remains closed and will be closed until such time as the health authorities tell us that it's acceptable to open. And I just really want to emphasize to everybody how deadly this particular virus is. It's not something to be trifled with. So when you see those signs that say "Stay Home, Save Lives," they mean business.
Thank you. And Counselor Bell?
Well, as you said, we haven't been meeting, but I know the historic mission has a lot of things that they had planned. So hopefully, we'll be able to do some of those things later in the year. And as far as the library, I know that they have been trying to provide some services. I can't specifically say what those are. I just know that we're doing our best for our staff to try to, well, still educate the community, keep them in books.
Thank you. And I think you were breaking up a lot, so I think you probably will have to turn off your camera, particularly if you want to speak. But speaking of the library and some of the things that are going on, they do have some things in the works, actually. Our, both libraries are working with Wimpeg, and we'll probably be seeing some readings. They'll be sending out librarians reading to kids over the Wimpeg YouTube channel soon and airing on a community station near you. Plus, we also, I believe, have some free books that our library had access to that, working with the school district, hopefully to do some book handouts for kids while the school district distributes lunches. So there's still a lot going on behind the scenes on the library. Yes?
An update on the library book readings?
Yes.
So apparently, there's a lot of discussion. I got this information this afternoon.
Okay.
So there's copyright issues that are involved, and it may not be quite the way that we talked about. So they're still working on it, but there's copyright, copyright issues that I'm not sure they're going to be able to overcome.
Performing the book.
Yeah, exactly.
All right, that's good to know. Of course, we're going to follow the rules on that. Counselor Lopez, do you have anything to share with us?
I just have a couple of brief words from Madam Mayor. Thank you. First, I'd like to really echo Counselor Sharmur's urgings for everyone to stay home. I know that it's not easy. I, myself, have been getting a little stir-crazy. This is my fourth week of staying home and working from home, and it's tough, but it's easier than the alternative. On a more business-oriented note, Minnet, Minnet is embarking on the budgeting process and will be implementing a remote budgeting system. So we'll be budgeting much of the same way that we're holding this council meeting. Details and specific dates are to follow, but we will, we will be finding a way for...
Okay, great, thank you. Yep, I think every public body is working on that. How do we get our budgets going? We are still waiting for guidance from the state about changes to the budget calendar. The local agencies, including school districts, special districts, the cities, counties, are hoping for an extension, that perhaps we would be allowed to continue our budget process past June 30th. That is the topic for the special session. Hopefully, that will be called and arranged soon. We'll be able to get that guidance, but yes, that would affect Minnet as well. Thank you. All right, city manager's report is included in our packet, but Chad, highlight.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. So I have the city manager's report in the council packet for the month of March. What I had been doing was including those months forward for meetings, and you'll see that a lot of those meetings are canceled. So nonessential meetings are deferred until some of the physical distancing issues are resolved. But as I said, there is a planning commission meeting that's scheduled for Wednesday, the 15th, next week at 7:00 p.m. Suzanne will be holding that. Hopefully, that will proceed without too many glitches, but it'll be interesting to see how that transpires. And before I go too much further, I just want to echo what the mayor said. The city staff and department heads have just been really fantastic. You have a highly skilled group of people that have taken on unanticipated responsibilities over the last month, including Janet, who is the go-to-meeting czar now. And she says, "I just, I just want to keep practicing it until I get it perfect." And I tell her, "Progress, not perfection." And with Suzanne being the city's designated public information officer, and she's doing a great job with the city website, All Things COVID-19, the Facebook page, trying to keep it mixed up and keep it relevant out there. So, and then with the different department heads being responsible for their areas, ensuring that we continue to work under the circumstances and maintain physical distancing and rotating employees in and out as needed. So I'm just, have been really impressed, and I think that you guys, your department heads and staff just really stand well by the city amendment. So that's all very well done. And with the city budget committee meetings, so at this point, I've talked to Janet about it. What we're going to do is just progress as though there will be no extensions. We are rescheduling the first meeting for May 5th, and then we'll follow the same schedule. And the anticipation is that the hearings required and the budget meetings will just continue on with a go-later-than-June 30th adoption. If that changes, you know, then we'll deal with that as it changes. But right now, I think we'll just try to muscle our way through it. And just a couple of things on the COVID-19. So you may have noticed the police department are, they're doing a couple of things. One is they have a prescription pickup and drop-off program that they're doing. They have had a few, I think two or three is what the chief told me so far. That's a program that they're trying to do. They're also looking to do a, they call it birthday parades for children and seniors. That one, they, we haven't had a parade yet, but they're still working on it. Digital speed signs have been placed by Public Works on Warren Church and Monmouth Street. So if you see some new ones that are posted coming into town, those were done by Public Works. And I think as far as the COVID-19, if you haven't looked at the Institute for Health Metrics and Evaluation, that's the site that's being used by a lot of reporting agencies. So I sent that out. Go to it. The link should take you to it real easily. It's updated frequently, and it's a good reporting system for the state of Oregon. So you can see how the curve is changing over time. And I do look at that every couple of days to keep an eye on it. So I'm, fingers crossed, fairly optimistic that within the next 10 days, we'll be on the downside of the slope. But that's just projections right now. We'll have to wait and see, of course. And I think I'll just leave it with that and see if the council has any questions.
Any questions for Chad? Byron Schinkel is trying to join us. He's having a problem. He cannot find a meeting in his go-to-meeting app. So I just gave him the phone number. We'll see if he can try to help. Yes, I did. And we had another caller join us. It looks like we have a caller number six, so that was... Audrey, are you on the phone and also your computer? All right, Byron says he can call in, so... I'll play technology juggling here. And caller seven, Byron? Yeah, Byron, could you just keep speaking so we make sure we can hear you?
1234, that's test, test, test.
Perfect. That's you. Thank you for joining us. Sorry about the technical difficulties. And we have had an opportunity just to kind of go around and talk about what we know is going on in the community. And I'll give you a chance to do that during council comments, Counselor Schinkel, and so we can move on to the presentation we have today. This was one of our projects this year, our water rate analysis. And I will let Chad introduce where we are and our consultant, who is on with us today on the phone.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Counsel, hi Deb, good to see you.
Hi, good to see you.
So the city of Monmouth for the past couple of years has budgeted for rate reviews for both its water and sewer utilities. A month and a half, a couple of months ago, I worked with Janet and Russ, the finance director and public works director, to put together a work scope and reached out to Deb Glardy with Glardy-Russning Group. I have, personally, I've worked with Deb in the past. She has a great reputation in the state of Oregon, plus she works outside the state in some areas. And by coincidence, sometime in the past, maybe 15 years ago, she did a rate review for the city of Monmouth. So reached out, we worked through the work scope and the C, which are included in the council packets, to basically look at the city utility water rates. So this is just over the next couple of months. This work is just directly related with the water utility. You'll pivot back afterwards for the wastewater utility. And Deb will, so she'll look at the existing costs related to the water utility, capital requirements, debt service, and compare that to the existing rates and see kind of where it pans out, make sure everything that's included on the cost side is there, and then look at the existing revenues and what would be required over time to continue to keep the water rate in a good position as it moves forward. And the only thing I'll mention before Deb's, the other thing I'll mention before Deb begins her presentation is that we did include a, you know, a community engagement component to the, to this analysis. So there's three public, we call public meetings. Now, at the time when we were designing this, we were hoping to have a little bit more robust attendance for the meetings. But the three include one presentation in the city council, which is tonight, one public, an open-house type of meeting, some type of town hall meeting for the public, and then at the conclusion, Deb will report back the findings to the council. So, and originally, we had hoped to have this completed by the end of the fiscal year, but at this point, I'm not sure that's going to happen, although I know Deb and the finance department are working well together to pull this information together to try to maintain our timeline. So with that, I'll just turn it over to Deb.
Okay, great. Janet, do you want to, so are you going to advance the slides?
I gave you the mouse and keyboard control, Deb, so you can advance them if you want. You have control, Deb. You are the presenter at the moment.
Okay, how...
You have forward access.
Look at that, okay. Looks like I can advance. Okay, good evening, everybody. Everybody getting used to the platform.
Excuse me, I want to jump in here.
Sure, sure, Laurel.
When Deb is speaking, there's a lot of feedback. It's like she's in an echo chamber. Is there some way somebody can fix that?
Right. Yeah, she would have to phone in as well to...
Okay, well, I will try to proceed along with the handout here.
Yes, thank you, if you can do that, as long as everybody else turns off your, not only your audio, but if you can turn off your computers at the moment, then perhaps that will make it clearer. I mean, not your computers, your videos, sometimes the bandwidth, I think, is an issue, so... And we'll just let Deb present.
Did you, do you want to call in via phone?
You might have to, Deb. You're breaking up now.
Okay, let's see, let me, it'll take me just a minute to get the number. I have to go back to the... Let's see, find the number.
Yeah, yeah, you'll have to turn off your computer audio. We'll let Deb call in and get Janet, get her set up, and then that way we can hear better.
Yep. Hello?
Hello. Hello. There you are.
Is that better? We're getting a little bit of feedback.
Yes, you have to turn off your computer audio. Someone's not hearing you when you speak.
I've got the microphone on mute.
It's your speaker.
My speaker, ah. Ooh, that's bad. How do you turn off the speaker?
So if you go into the settings...
Okay.
On the computer.
I'm going to mute this.
Typically, then there's... Yeah, turn off computer audio. Finding that?
Looking here, I'm in my settings. Speakers.
Oh, sorry, it's in the go-to-meeting setting. It's in the little pinwheel in the upper right corner.
Oh, it's in the go-to-meeting.
Sorry.
Okay, no worries. Okay, so... Okay, so... Star, okay.
So it should give you the option of turn off computers.
Okay, so I'm in the, so I see Support, Sound Check, Audio Statistics.
Computer and phone. There should be two options. Just the little pinwheel in the corner. You don't have to go to a different menu.
Okay, I see it.
And there you should have the option for computer settings. Has two options, computer and phone.
Let's try that. Is that better?
Ah, I think we've got it.
Okay. All right. Okay, back to the presentation here. I will just do a little background, talk about the financial plan development, a little bit about capital improvements, and just give you some national trends and next steps in our study. Okay, there we go. Now I'm rolling on the mouse again. Okay. In terms of background, the prior rate increase for the water system was in May of 2018, where you had a 10% rate increase. In, as part of the current budget, there was a $500,000 loan from the sewer fund made to the water system, which will be repaid at about $108,000 per year until that's paid off. And that was needed to fund capital improvements in the current year and meet the council's fund balance policy of a 25% annual operating expenses held in reserves. The master plan draft has identified capital improvements totaling about $5 million over the next two phases, which goes through 2028. So there's some significant capital improvements on the horizon, most notably in the second phase. But now is a good time to... And fund and get in a position to pay for the continued operation and maintenance costs of the system as well as the anticipated more significant improvements to the water system as part of Phase Two. Okay. Just a little bit about the current rate. You have, as I said, these current rates went into effect in May of 2018. The rate structure is comprised of two components. A volume rate, which is the cost per 100 cubic feet, CCF, of water used. The same for residential and general service, $2.62 per unit. And then there's a meter charge, which is fixed each month. And it's based on the meter size. It increases as the size of the customer's meter increases. And it represents about 36% of the revenue, the annual revenue received by the water utility. And that's really important. The industry standard is 30 to 40% of revenue recovery from fixed charges, not from volume charges, so that you have a fairly stable revenue source because most of the costs in the water system are fixed. They don't fluctuate with water use. And so it's important to have at least a third of your revenue recovery from the fixed portion of the rate structure. So that's really good that the current rates do provide that. In terms of development of the financial plan, it's pretty much like how you would approach developing a financial plan for your home or your business. The first step is to identify sources of funds. And because the water system is an enterprise fund of the city, most of the, it is completely self-supporting. And the primary source of funds are user fees or the rates. There are also some other miscellaneous revenues, interest income, and systems development charges are specifically to fund eligible capital improvements. We then forecast the operating expenses, which are the personnel, materials, and services type costs to operate and maintain the system. And then we forecast the capital, capital-related costs. And this can include debt service or funding prior or future facilities and cash funding, capital investments, so the water line, treatment, supply type costs. Then other requirements include transfers to other funds, the general fund, for example, for support services, franchise fees, and reserves. So if that includes operating contingencies as well as putting away money for planned future capital improvement. So we project the costs. We project revenue from existing rates. And if there's a gap, then that represents the additional revenue that we need to generate from a rate increase. So we call that the revenue flow. That's the percent of increase that would be needed to fund the projected costs in every year. In developing the forecast, some of the key factors or drivers include your financial policies, like how much you're going to maintain in reserves for every year, debt service coverage, how much the rates need to generate over and above debt service to meet your lending requirements. Growth and consumption trends impact the, mostly the revenue side of the equation. So we look at past consumption trends and anticipated growth. Economic factors like just general inflation and interest rates, things like that, also play into the forecast. Operating budget is the base for which we then forecast into the future and make adjustments for one-time expenses or other anticipated factors within the forecast period. And then obviously, the master plan is important at identifying the needed capital improvements and the sequence of those improvements. We have new factors to consider as part of the COVID-19. And this is potentially impacts utilities, both in terms of decreasing revenues as well as on the cost side of the equation. Because about two-thirds of your revenue comes from the volume charges, it's based on water consumption, and with businesses forced to close or cut back, in the case of restaurants and things, then absolutely the water revenues will also similarly be impacted. If there's a slowdown in construction and development, then that can impact the system development charges and other fee charges. So that's something we'll closely look at. It's too soon to tell exactly how prolonged this will be. As Chad said, hopefully, this will be a short-term reduction, but something that we'll need to test the sensitivity to. On the cost side, there can be potentially supply chain issues, chemicals, protective equipment things, that then translate into increased costs for the utilities as well as customer service transactional kind of costs that we'll need to take a look at as well.
Deb, I'm set in. This is...
No, please.
When you, when we talk about short-term effects, I'm going to say probably one of our largest users, especially commercial, is Western Oregon University.
Yes.
And they are definitely closed for in-person classes through June. So I think if you have thought you've heard that, I'm sure that will be a factor as well, so.
Yep, absolutely. That's, that's exactly. And it points back to the need for building reserves and maintaining reserves. And that's partly why you have your 25% fund balance policy, which is really important. That, that's why we have those kinds of contingencies because things like this, emergencies, whether it be on the cost or the revenue side or both, can really be a shock to the system. So those are, we'll have to run some sensitivity analysis and make some projections on the best estimates that we can and do some contingency planning for sure. On the capital improvements, this shows, this graph gives you for the first, the five-year period, what the five-year CIP looks like. And as I mentioned, so with the total five-year CIP, which includes about 1.6 million or about $300,000 per year over that period. It's really that Phase Two that's then a more significant. And as we said, we're just getting going on the technical analysis. So we'll be working with staff to come up with a 10-year projection of capital costs and then evaluating the rate increases that are needed to support that. But you can see that there's a pretty significant increase in that second five years, even from an annual basis, annual average. So just to get a sense on the revenue from existing rates and what that is supporting now, you can see from this table, the budgeted revenue for fiscal year 2020 was about $2 million. As Janet just mentioned, this is likely going to be optimistic under the circumstances, given that a significant impact to commercial from forced closures. The operation and maintenance costs are budgeted about 1.8 million. And then that leaves about $200,000 available for capital improvement. So, you know, looking back at the prior slide or considering the capital improvements that we're looking at going forward, in the first five years, it was about $300,000 average per year. And in the second five years, that increases significantly. So you can, you can see even without taking into, into account the COVID-19 potential reductions in revenue that there is going to be a gap. And we're going to have to look at ways to how you, different options for how to phase that in. So this shows why, you know, with the sewer loan helping bridge the gap in the short term to build up the capacity needed to meet the capital improvements that were funded or included in the 2020 budget, which were about $700,000. Okay, so when we look at the rates, we're trying to make sure that we're developing a plan that puts you in a solid financial situation. And some of the components of that, as I've mentioned, having reserves and making sure they were meeting, planning to meet your fiscal policy, the rate structure, generating a significant amount from fixed charges, which as I mentioned, from the preliminary analysis, you're looking good there. And then having moderate annual adjustments to minimize any major rate spikes. We'll be looking at different options for how to smooth rate increases over the planning period. And just wanted to mention that in terms of national trends, we, water and wastewater systems, all utility systems, are very capital-intensive industries. And so the rate increases have tended to exceed inflation by double or triple. It's been the trend over the last decade. And you can see here, so these different bars represent the average increases for water and wastewater rates nationally compared to the green, which are the CPI. So it's just the nature of the business, the need to fund capital, very significant capital replacement as well as deal with regulatory requirements. In Oregon, seismic resiliency, things like that are all really important and drivers of why significant capital investment is needed in that sense to outpace just general consumer inflation. So the next step will be to complete the financial plan projections, both on the operating costs and the capital improvements, and to come up with those rate revenue scenarios to bring back to you hopefully in May, later in May. Maybe we'll be face-to-face. That would be nice. But in the meantime, we'll continue to work through this remote. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Yeah, Janet's going to unmute everybody, so if you have a question or comment, if you can sort of tentatively say your name first so that we can know who's trying to speak if you overlap. Never mind. If you muted yourself, you have to unmute yourself, Janet. Unmute Suzanne at this point, I think, so. If you have a question, please feel free to unmute yourself and say your name, and I'll recognize you for a comment or question.
This is Byron.
Byron, thank you. Go ahead.
What is driving, that last side, that last slide really was... What's driving that increase over the CPI?
This here?
Yeah.
This is, so the CPI doesn't take into account for the utilities, excuse me, the capital improvement needs and the backlog of capital. So generally, nationally, we haven't been keeping pace with, our rates don't include, for example, depreciation, an amount to regularly invest, reinvest in the system to replace pipes, to, and pump stations, and treatment plants, and reservoirs, and all of that capital. You layer on to that then additional regulatory requirements and the need to improve seismic, you know, resiliency, things like that. And that's what's really driving the, the need for the rates to increase generally. And, you know, and this is, this is generally speaking, more than inflation. In Oregon, many communities are facing the need to go to different, develop new water sources. All of those things factor into why these numbers are the way they are.
So what, I guess what element of those CIPs are driving the rapid increase? Is it, is it materials, labor? What, what, I mean, maybe you don't know.
Well, you can look at it, like go back to what I was showing in terms of your... Yes?
Excuse me. After you ask your question, if you mute yourself, I think that's part of it, Byron. We're hearing the feedback while you're unmuted. So if you ask your question, mute yourself, and then I'll, I'll make sure you're finished with questioning before we move on. So thank you. Go ahead, Deb.
Sure. I think part of it is, as in, you can see in your rate structure, right now, your rates can really only pay for... right now, your rates can really only pay for about $200,000 a year. That's not sufficient to pay for, uh, the needed capital improvement. And, and similarly, um, nationally, rates have not increased sufficiently to pay for, uh, you know, the, the capital need. They haven't kept pace with the need to replace and expand and improve systems. And, and it just, it, you know, I can't speak specifically to, uh, Monmouth at this point as to what is driving your capital, and that's what really differs between communities. But a lot of it is the backlog of, of replacement. You know, the pipes are under the ground. We tend to try, uh, to, to have them basically be there as long as we can. And, and many of those assets can last 50 years, but they're being pushed well beyond that, 100 years or more, uh, because it's expensive and to dig up the streets and, and play new pipes and things like that. So it's just that backlog, a lot of backlog of maintenance and replacement, as well as expanded, uh, regulatory and other needs.
Okay, Byron, if you have another question? If you shake your head, thank you. Any other questions? Introduce yourself and I'll call on you. Okay?
Are you getting it?
John?
Yeah. Um, a couple of things. One, I, I'm, I'm, uh, I'm in complete agreement that we're going to have some impact, um, relative to the COVID-19, um, in the current year. I think it's difficult, especially relative to the university and other, some of our other larger users, school districts and so forth, if we have any of that. Um, that may be, uh, a one-year deal, uh, it may be more than that. So I, I, I'm anticipating that you'll factor that possibility of the one-year, uh, drop into your calculation. Um, a, a, and that's just a comment. The, the second is, is one of the things that's driving a fair amount of, of the need here is, is what you're referring to as the master plan draft. Um, have we, and this is a question for whoever's on that can answer it, not you, Deb. Um, has reviewed that? Is that, I mean, on this capital thing, is that gonna something in the layout and the budget process? Um, and, and what does that entail?
Sorry, Janet got sidetracked here, so I'm not sure she heard the question, John. Yeah, sorry. She's trying, we're trying to figure out the, some issues with feedback and some other things. So she missed.
Yeah, well.
And, okay. Okay, right. So if you ask the question again, John, sorry. Janet can, oh, no, you're muted, John. I see your mouth moving. I don't hear you. I think he's caller six. He is.
Well, I'm on my phone.
Yep, we got it. Go ahead and ask Janet again.
That's a, that's a common thing with you, Cece. You see my mouth moving, but you don't hear me. I get it. Okay, um, the, the question, uh, has to do with, uh, one of the big drivers in cost, future costs are the master plan draft. Um, and have we seen that? Do we know, have we looked at that? Um, and when will that be viewed?
Right. She's going to actually unmute Russ. He better shut the M.
Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you, Russ.
All right, thank you, John. Good question. The, the, the draft master plan is, uh, near complete. It has a, a capital improvement, uh, list of projects, uh, as was identified in this, um, PowerPoint presentation, as having a couple of phases. Uh, it is, we're wrapping up the end of it, you know, kind of putting the final touches on it. And then we'll send it to the Oregon Health Authority for their review and comments on it. And then we'll, uh, bring it back and, uh, present that to council for you to have a chance to take a look at it. So what we wanted to do is, in this process, make sure that we, uh, you know, we're comfortable with the projects that are identified in that master plan. And so we wanted to make sure that we included those in this process.
Sure. Good, uh, good, good plan there. Uh, that would be, because that is a major cost element, you know, that, that'll be something that, uh, needs to be factored in, but it needs to be carefully considered as well. And then the final thing, and Russ, while you're here, um, in years past, we've talked, we're talking water, um, our water system. We've been concerned about or had discussions about the, and I don't have the right term, but the amount of water we lose through the aging system. Um, have we got, have we got clear data on that?
Yes, we have, uh, so we did what's called a, a water loss audit. Uh, we did that, uh, over the course of about two years. Uh, during that process, we found a couple of, uh, sources of, of, uh, water leaks. Those have been addressed and our water loss is, uh, uh, below what the, basically what the health authority, uh, requires or recommends for a water system. So yes, we have addressed that.
Russ, this is Chad. Can you, can, can you say what that amount is as a percentage of production? Or can you put, quantify it?
It, well, uh, it, it's less than 10%. It, it's like a 9% water loss. And so that's, uh, that's, yeah.
Yeah.
That's well within the acceptable range, for sure.
That's correct.
Okay, that, that does it for me, Cece.
Thank you, thank you, Councilor Terry. Were there any other questions? Or Deb, or Russ, or Janet? Unmute yourself and identify yourself. I'll give you another chance, but Chad?
Okay, I, yeah, I have a question. I wanted to circle back to a, the question that Byron raised. So if I'm looking at the, um, the bar graph, Deb, when you were talking about the, uh, yeah, that's the, that's the one. So looking at that, the green is the CPI, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so on the water rates, which is the lighter blue color. So just to make sure, I'm, I'm repeating, I think, what you said. Just make sure I, I heard you correctly. The, um, the increase has more to do with the capital investment than just the, uh, average increases in O and M, for example.
Correct.
It's the, it's the requirement to invest in the, uh, the, the plant and the, the, uh, the, the main lines and all of that. That's, that's the reason.
Correct.
And most cities, and so, um, Byron, I can, I can speak just historically. Most cities, uh, have a tremendous amount of deferred, uh, improvements that they do because it's just, uh, and I'm sure Deb can attest to this. A lot, most cities don't want to raise rates sufficient to keep up with capital requirements. So, um, so when they go to make the improvements, they end up having to make, uh, pretty large investments at one time. And then you see rates have a, a pretty dramatic increase, um, at given times. So if, I used to tell councils, when they would compare rates, um, to each other, I would say, well, they have an old plant, they have no debt. Wait until they have to, uh, improve their treatment plant and, and their rates will skyrocket. And that's what you tend to see. So, um, I think if you were just looking at, at CPI, if it were just that, it would be, you know, something that would be easily managed, uh, within a year-to-year basis. But the, uh, capital investments is what's gonna drive those numbers.
Correct.
John?
Oh, there we go.
You know, and, and, uh, I, I heard it the same way you did, Chad, and which causes me to, I, I'm not even sure why. This, this is a relative or, or a relevant comparison. You know, to match, uh, the rate increases to CPI. Um, I mean, the CPI deals with all kinds of things, and there's lots of leveling on that. But the, the rest of this is, is large investment stuff. So I'm, I'm, I'm sort of confused by the, the, you know, the, the juxtaposition of the different, uh, comparators there. That's it.
Thank you, John.
This is Byron.
Yes, Byron.
What, what's concerning to me isn't the cost or the spikes, the fact that the increases are outpacing inflation, if you will, which means it's outpacing people's increases in their wages, their salaries. And so as that chews up a bigger part of the city's revenue streams, that is definitely gonna become a problem. That's what I'm envisioning, that's what I'm hearing here. So that's, I, I think it's relevant from that aspect of it. And my concern, like I said, is not that these spikes, but over, year over year, decade over decade, the trajectories are unsustainable.
Deb, do you have a comment, Zach?
Well, I'll just say, and, and I, I agree, um, with the last comment that, um, this, so this information comes from the American Water Works Association. Every two years, they provide a survey that provides this kind of comparison. Um, and people like to compare CPI for reasons just mentioned, that it's oftentimes, um, indexed and, and, uh, gauged for wages and things like that. So unfortunately, historically, water and sewer also have been underpriced compared to what the true cost is. So if, if we were, uh, funding at a, a true cost level, then, then inflationary adjustments would be fine because we, you know, we'd just be keeping place with cost increases. But we're not. We're having to increase the level of investment to pay for that deferred payment. And that's, again, is, is just an industry-wide issue. And, uh, so that's, that's why the information, um, is generally, uh, provided by, in the industry context.
So, so in other words, if everybody before us had done their job and done the right kinds of increases, looking to the future, instead of trying to kick the can down the road, we wouldn't be caught making difficult decisions.
Yes, that, that's part of it. Um, it, it was, uh, in the seventies, you know, treatment plants and things were subsidized by the federal government. And, uh, so the costs were lower. And, um, and the pipes, when they were put in the ground, they, you know, had a long life ahead of them. We're just now, in part, catching, you know, catching up with, oh, uh, we need to start planning for the replacement of that. And no, there aren't grants to fund major infrastructure at this point in time. So it's a combination of things. But, but yeah, uh, best case would have been for ongoing, um, putting money away for reserve, in reserves to fund future, uh, replacements.
Other observations or questions at this point? I'm seeing none. So we have before us, again, sort of the process, the methodology, what's going to be happening, um, over the next month or so, and then potentially whether or not we'll be able to get, uh, citizen input through sort of a traditional town hall type, or whether we'll be looking at more of a survey or a meeting like this to be able to explain and let people know the path we are apparently going down if we are to truly fund the system in order to be able to maintain it. Um, but Deb, if you wanna, again, just kind of go through that, if I captured that?
Yep, that's exactly right.
All right. So no other questions on that. I think we will let Deb check out. We, we, uh, will hear from you again soon. Thank you for doing this work for us. Appreciate it.
Thank you, and stay safe, everyone. See you next month.
Thank you. Uh, I'll move forward on our agenda. We actually have a few business items this evening. Uh, we will start with ordinance. And that is the second reading of the ordinance allowing an extension of our franchise of astound broadband. And Chad, I think this is kind of brief, but if you wanna just give us a quick one on this?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So yes, this is the second reading on the astound, astound broadband extension. It's ordinance number 1391. It, all of the terms and conditions of the, uh, prior, uh, franchise agreements stay in place. It's, it's strictly a, a fixed-time, five-year extension of the franchise agreement. Um, so there's no changes. The Public Works and Power and Light have, uh, I talked to them about the, uh, interaction performance of the sound or wave. And there hasn't been any issues. And the fees provided by, uh, the franchise is, uh, either 5% of gross revenues or $5,000 per year, whichever is greater. And, uh, with that, I'll just turn it back over to the council. Thank you.
So this would be an ordinance granting astound broadband LLC, a Washington limited liability company, an extension of the franchise to conduct a general telecommunications business and granting a right, uh, to use public's rights of way within the city and declaring an emergency. So that would allow this to take effect immediately upon passage. And I would entertain a motion to adopt the ordinance.
Uh, Cece says, John?
John, Carrie?
Yeah.
I'll move to adopt ordinance number, uh, 1391, granting astound broadband and extend, and extension of the franchise agreement.
Thank you, John.
Hold on a second.
Darren, for the second, thank you very much. And are there any questions or comments?
Hi, this is Byron.
Thank you, Byron.
The, you mentioned, you mentioned, uh, emergency?
Yes, this would, uh, take effect immediately upon passage just because it's an extension of the agreement, so there's no waiting period to make it effective?
Cece says, well, another reason for, another reason for emergency is that I think the five-year franchise agreement has already expired, uh, or it's about to expire. I'll have to page over on screen. So we need to move this to the panel in order to, uh, continue the term.
I couldn't unplug the audio.
Yeah, I can understand it. As it says in the ordinance, the franchise actually expired on March 3rd, 2020. We got a little delayed, so.
Well, yeah, so five years ago, when the council adopted it, it was signed on March 3rd, if I remember right. And it would have gone into effect 30 days afterwards. So it actually was effective the first week in April. The emergency would allow for a, uh, so instead of having another 30-day gap where it would be expired during those 30 days, the emergency allows it to, um, basically not have a gap, um, during that. That's why for the emergency clause. That's why for the emergency clause in this, in the ordinance.
Does that answer your question, Byron?
Does that make sense?
Yeah, it answers, what happens if, are they not on the hook for the money if they don't use an emergency status here, or how, what would happen?
I guess that would be a question for Lane. Administratively, I'm just trying to, with the emergency, is trying to ensure that there's not a lapse. It could be just an administrative action, given the COVID-19. I had told Wade that I would administratively do what I could to extend it, so that there wouldn't be a gap, but the intent of the emergency is just to not allow that to happen.
Cease?
Yeah.
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, Lane.
Okay, I was going to say, yeah, Byron, I don't know what's going on. To answer your question, I guess, we don't want to reveal the answer yet, neither does Astound. I think the assumption was that if these two are posted together, there wouldn't be any gap in collection.
I think it's hard to hear, Lane, partly because, again, John and Byron, if you mute yourself after you speak, then it's a little easier to hear him. Lane, you are a little muffled, though.
Yeah, I don't understand.
So do you want to repeat what you said, Lane?
Sure, I'll try. What I'm saying was that I think we wanted to do this, connect this agreement closely to the firing, because we don't want to know what happened if we had a gap. Neither does Astound, particularly, and so the idea is to make this effective as possible, minimize the gap, and avoid any interruption in revenue.
Close enough, huh? Okay. Any other questions? All right. Phyllis, can you go ahead and do a roll call, so everybody, if you want to unmute yourself when you hear your name, and then mute immediately after your vote?
All right, Councilor Kerry.
Hi.
Councilor Schinkel.
Yes.
Councilor Lopez.
Hi.
Councilor Sharmur.
Yes.
Councilor Belt.
Yes.
Councilor Silvernagle.
Yes.
All right, sounds like that passes, and declaring an emergency, so we can continue the arrangements, and ordinance number 1391, thank you. So that takes us to a couple of resolutions, and this first one is something that we've been hearing about a little bit, but this is new detail to us. So Chad, I'd like to go ahead and give us the background or Russ on resolution number 1895, adopting various no parking zones and bus stops.
Russ, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor and member of councils. What I have before you for your consideration is a resolution establishing various no parking zones and bus stops for chariots' use. Chariots has been working with the city for about 16 months, identifying suitable locations and doing public outreach. The attached resolution is an important step towards chariots initiating this proposed route. Once adopted, chariots can then provide their contractor a notice to proceed with painting curbs and installing the signs, identifying these new bus stop locations. With the newly proposed bus stop locations being in residential areas, the signs and curb markings will help prevent motorists from inadvertently parking in these areas set aside for the bus to pull up along curbside for loading and unloading passengers. Chariots will cover the initial cost of the signs and the curb painting. The city will incur a minimal ongoing cost for maintaining the curb markings thereafter. I've included a proposed motion in my staff report for these, for this resolution, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
And I think I'll just add on to that, we have had Ted from chariots here to talk to us about this, this would be part of the expanded service that had been planned, and as I think he described the process to us well, they were doing not just kind of general outreach, they were very much engaged, I believe, with contacting individual homeowners, residences, businesses that this would potentially affect. So I can attest to how any of those contacts went, no one got a hold of me and said, no, you know, they're trying to put a bus stop in front of my house. But I have heard generally in the community that they have done a good job of trying to get that outreach done. So as far as I know, none of this would come as a surprise if they come and paint the curbs as no parking. Are there any other comments? John, Kerry?
I have a couple. You know, as I'm reading the background on the staff report, it talks about installation of signs and curb markings for proposed bus stops, and down below in the financial implications, it talks about facilities, bus stop facilities. We talking, are we going to be adding shelters at these? And it seems that some may already exist. That would be my first question, are we talking about physical structures?
No, I'm sorry about that. No, when I use the term facilities, just encompassing the sign and the paint markings, there's no intention at this time to do bus shelters.
Okay. Then is, who would be, and I just don't know how those are going to lay out, but if there are any ADA issues, who would, whose responsibility would be, would that be to get those mitigated? On the curb?
We've had, yeah, we've had some conversations with chariots about that, and that was part of the discussion on the location for these particular bus stops. They want to be able to pull up to a curb and unload onto an improved surface. There are a couple of these surfaces that, you know, we, the chariots acknowledges they don't have the funds for a landing pad improvement, but that they will be working in that direction in order to provide a, basically an improved or concrete surface for folks to unload onto.
Hey, that's great. And then the final question for me is, is there any provision, and do we want to include anything in here that might allow for removal should the bus routes change? Should they decide to abandon this route? You know, not only on the parking, you know, the no parking sort of zone, but the sign, you know, we have signs in front of them, maybe they're not there anymore, but for years, we had 15-minute loading zone signs in front of appliance store downtown that used to be a post office, and it was 15 minutes for that. I guess it may be wise to build a provision in for removal if it's no longer used.
I would, I guess I would defer to Lane on the provision. My opinion would be that if this route were to cease, then we would want to come in and remove the signs and eliminate the curb paintings, and at that time, we would move toward, I'm going to use the wrong term here, but revoke the, this particular resolution and go through the process there. A little bit different than the downtown sign where it was still being used as a parking zone and just was overlooked. This would be a pretty obvious no parking zone that shouldn't be one.
Sure. Yeah, okay, I'm just trying to find an easy way, should that unfortunate circumstance come about, but, I mean, so it may have to come back to the council for revocation, but that's okay.
Yeah, I concur with Russ's answer there. We don't need it in this resolution.
Okay, so we don't need to mention it here, but we just need to be mindful that a resolution did create the circumstance, and if it goes away, we would want to resist it. Any other comments or questions? I will entertain the motion then. Ross?
Your Honor?
Yes.
This is actually a question for legal counsel, because this is my employer, should I recuse myself at this point?
No, I don't think this has, I think it's fair enough that maybe there are potential conflicts, but it doesn't come out to an actual time.
Thank you.
Unless you get a bonus for this, I think he would then advise you to recuse yourself, but in this case, no potential benefit to you personally. Thank you, though, for that reminder. So I will entertain a motion.
I move adoption of resolution 1895, a resolution designating no parking zones and bus stops. This is Counselor Lopez.
Thank you, Counselor Lopez.
Counselor Schinkel, second.
Counselor Schinkel, thank you for the second, and again, resolution number 1895, a resolution providing the designation of no parking zones and bus stops. Phyllis, roll call, please.
Counselor Belt.
Yes.
Counselor Silvernagle.
Yes.
Counselor Lopez.
Hi.
Counselor Schinkel.
Yes.
Counselor Kerry.
Hi.
Counselor Sharmur.
Yes.
All right, thank you very much. Resolution number 1895 has passed, so Russ, the chariots have a few other things on their hands right now, but I assume that they'll be in touch, and we can get this prepared for when they are able to resume their route.
Thank you very much.
So our next and last piece of business this evening, another resolution, and this is finally putting together another step forward in the process that we have been engaged in to become a part of the Mid Willamette Valley Homeless Alliance, and move ourselves forward as a continuum of care. So Chad, what's this step?
So I'm going to just give a couple of comments, and then turn it over to the city attorney to answer questions, talk about the agreement, but as Mayor said, resolution 1896 is an intergovernmental agreement, or IGA, between the city and the other governmental agencies related to the designation of an interim collaborative applicant for the Mid Willamette Valley Homeless Alliance. So the Homeless Alliance is a continuum of care, and a requirement from HUD is that there is a collaborative applicant who can act on behalf, incur expenses, receive funds, and things like that. Up to this point, the council of governments has been performing that activity, and they have agreed to continue on an interim basis until there is a permanent entity that is capable or ready to pick that up. So the attorneys for the different agencies got together and basically crafted this interim six-month agreement that would allow the council of governments to continue to act as the collaborative applicant until they find that permanent solution. So those are my comments, and Lane, please.
Okay, I'll speak slowly and in short phrase to fight the echo. Chad pretty well said it all. This is really very simple and very limited in scope. It is a six-month agreement that allows the COG will be paid for its service as the coordinator until a more permanent appointment can be made, and that is what will occur during the term of this agreement. So there's really not much more than that, this just buys six months' time to come to a really a more permanent arrangement for a collaborator, to be able to contract with the federal government for services relative to the purpose of the alliance, which is to address homelessness.
I had one quick question, it's the resolution is stated as a resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement between Monmouth and the City of Salem and other local governments, and I was just thought that was interesting since the City of, why the City of Salem is called out, and it's not, the COG is not listed at all in the title of our resolution.
Oh, it's, you know, I guess it could have been, it's really not a particularly material thing. The agreement really isn't with COG, I mean, COG is a party to the agreement along with everybody else, and so, you know, it's one of several local governments, it is being singled out for a particular role, but this agreement really is an IGA among all of these other local governments, and I think, as I recall, the original resolution by which we approved participation in the alliance bore that same manner of the title between Monmouth and the City of Salem and other parties, so I think I just kept the structure of that the same, since it deals with the same thing.
Oh, okay, thank you. So the only other thing I can think of is that the City of Salem during the interim is acting as the fiscal agent, so that could be a reason why they're being specified.
Yeah. Thank you. John, Kerry?
Is the, in the staff report, Polk County is not noted as one of the governmental entities that are included, but they are in the IGA, and then in the charter as well, so are they now on board? I mean, the question is, is Polk County going to participate in this?
The answer is yes.
Yes, I think they did join in.
Yes.
Okay, good, thank you, that's all.
Yeah, they were not originally a member, you're right, but I know that they have since joined. If there were no other questions, then, there is a proposed motion to adopt resolution number 1896, as I read.
I propose or I adopt resolution number 1896, approving an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Monmouth and other local governments for the designation of an interim collaborative applicant for the Mid Willamette Valley Homeless Alliance. That is mouthful.
Second.
Counselor Belt, any further discussion or questions? Seeing none, roll call, please, Ms. Bulmon.
Counselor Sharmur.
Yes.
Counselor Schinkel.
Yes.
Counselor Carey.
Hi.
Counselor Silvernagle.
Hi.
Counselor Belt.
Hi.
Counselor Lopez.
Hi.
We have passed Resolution Number 1896, and that brings us down to council comments. So Byron, you get first crack at this. We all had a chance to kind of talk through what our thoughts have been for the last couple of weeks, and anything we had observed or noticed about the community that we wanted to share. So you give it to us.
Um, gosh, I don't, I don't have a lot of observations. I think from what I've seen, people are taking the advice. I don't see too many people out just, you know, hanging out or doing, doing stuff that might contribute to the spreading of, of the virus. So I'm pretty, pretty impressed with the citizens of Monmouth. I just hope that we can get through this quickly and, and have the recovery begin.
Any other additional comments before we adjourn? John?
Very quickly, I, I would invite you all to join me and my family at 7:00 each evening to go outside and make noise, bang on pots and pans, any other noise makers. And Chief Talon, I'm sure that I'm violating a noise ordinance, but it's only for about 30 seconds in celebration of our frontline healthcare workers, and, and police officers and first responders of every type. You know, so Darren, you might be able to hear it from your place, but I'm making a lot of noise out there, so join me. Thank you.
The teddy bear hunts, that folks are putting teddy bears in their windows, inviting people with their kids to drive around and see those. The school district is providing childcare through its partner, the YMCA, providing child, emergency childcare to medical personnel, first responders. And the school district today, between kids and families who came to pick up meals, as well as those who are now able to pick up seven days' worth of meals at a time. So families can select, they get two sack meals, a breakfast and lunch. They can pick up seven days' worth at a time for any child in the community ages one to 18. And today, that resulted in a record, 1,353 students served today with meals. So great things going on as people are helping. Our Meals on Wheels is running about 50 meals. They, they do those twice a week for seniors. And the agencies and nonprofits working in our community to support people during this time is absolutely amazing. So I will just do one more thing. If we do, do recall, we have a special meeting that would be a week from tonight, April 4th, or during the day, night.
14, yeah.
Yes, at night. In the evening at 6:00 PM, we will have a, an executive session. We will interview our city manager finalists at that time. And so we will again go through this process and have an opportunity to virtually meet the four finalists that we had selected. So I remember, encourage you all to make sure you've got that on your calendars. We will trust Guru Janet to work this magic thing again so that we can meet.
Janet said she prefers, prefers the term czar.
Czar. The go-to meeting czar. And Laurel, we will work to get you something so that you can have an opportunity to see as well as hear. That's going to be, I know, particularly important for that meeting, so we will work that out. And I may drop my computer off at your house and get it set up for you before I come on in, because I have a couple of them I can do that with you for. So, hearing, seeing no other hands raised, hearing no other comments, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Darren?
I was gonna ask, do we have a start time for the special meeting? Or 6:30?
6:00 PM.
6 o'clock PM will start.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
Chad's looking at me.
Actually, so I was speaking from memory at the 6 o'clock, but actually, at the last meeting, the council didn't designate a start time?
I don't think we did.
Yes.
I think we maybe were gonna start a little earlier.
Yes. So the discussion, I apologize. The discussion was to start sometime earlier, say mid-afternoon, but the council hadn't designated. So if you figure an hour per person plus an hour afterwards for deliberations, you should block off five hours. And I would decide what time you want it, do you want it be done? If it's 8 o'clock, you want it be done, you would start at 3:00.
I'm okay with that timeline.
3:00. I, I think most of us have sort of blocked out the day. That was originally a day we had potentially planned to be engaged throughout the day. 3:00, or start earlier, 2:00, if we can get our candidates' availability lined up.
If we could do 2, that'd be better.
I fully have blocked out the entire day, and I'm fully available, happy to knock it out early.
Okay. Byron?
Yeah, the earlier the better. Start at 10:00 AM if I can.
I see, I see nods for 10:00, as early as 10:00. Is that gonna cause any issues with anyone? Nodding and shoulder, so, so if we can advise Steve Worthington that we would be willing to start as early as 10:00, if we did that, we would probably take a break for lunch at some point so that we could, we could have a little bit of break in between, which might be a nice opportunity anyway. Doing that sort of four-hour streak can be a little bit daunting. So if we can do it at 10:00 to noon, and then take even a 30 minutes, start again at 12:30 to 1:30, 1:30 to 2:30, and be done by 4:00 in the afternoon. And if our candidates are not available, we could potentially kind of move in and out of executive session if we had to flex that a little bit. I'm not seeing that give anybody any heartburn. Laurel, does that work for you?
That works for me.
Thank you. Everybody thumbs up and nods. So I think we'll do that. Actually, Chad will let us know what time. Great question.
I'll work on that tomorrow. Thank you.
All right. Now I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
Thank you, Darren. And if it's the second, we're a go.
Second.
Thank you very much. Good night, guys. Appreciate everything. Talk to you soon.
Good night, everybody. Stay, stay home.